Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and call it at order the February 27th Board of Commissioners meeting. Thanks, everyone, for being here today. This morning, we have a pastor, Glenn Wagler, from New Life Church, to give our opening prayer. Pastor, would you like to come up to the podium?
Good morning. I count it a privilege to be here this morning and to lead out in prayer, so I would like to do that this time. Father, you taught us to pray. In Jesus' name, our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thou will be done on earth that is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors, lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Lord, there's a lot packed into that prayer that you taught us. And this morning, I just pray that you would bless this meeting here this morning. I thank you for each person that you have called and ordained to be chosen for this position at this time to serve this community, Lord. I pray you would empower them, help them to understand who they are in Christ, their position, where you have called them to be. I pray you would empower them with your Holy Spirit. I pray you would power them with discernment and wisdom from on high, that they can do this to your honor and your glory. Lord, we thank you and we praise you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Okay, I think everyone received a copy of the February 13th Board of Commissioner meeting minutes. Were there any changes that needed to be made, Ron?
I saw none.
Saw none. I didn't see any either. Did I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Arnold. I was second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes two zero. Okay, we did have a highway meeting this morning. Present was Commissioner Arnold, myself, and soon-to-be Commissioner-elect, Mike Keith. Lord willing. So, topics that were discussed was the, just a recap of the five-year road improvement plan. I think we've upgraded 46 miles of road from gravel to hardened surface. Extensive conversation on dust control. There was general agreement that 2024 very well could be our last year in the dust control business, so we're planning the exit strategy for that. What else?
Just on the dust control, it's a rather long process, takes a couple months in the ideal season that they could be spending on upgrading and maintaining the roads. And so, just feels it'd be better if we'd be out of that. Then talked about some projects that may need to be done.
Yeah, and the salt building's coming along nicely, so excellent. Yeah, so those were the topics for the highway meeting. There was no further discussion, so Chris won't be here this morning. So first up, this morning, we've got the Health Department, Kathy. I think I saw her come in. Morning Kathy. The clinic lab and services fees.
So this morning, I'd like to talk to you about the Rooted Project and some clinics that we have operational. So the Rooted Project started about a year ago with some mobile clinics that we held in our community for people who had no insurance or what is considered emergency Medicaid. And as those mobile clinics continued, we'd realized there was a huge need in our community for healthcare to be provided for people who had no insurance. So the Rooted Project is now two days a week clinic at the Health Department, and then beginning March 11th, we have a need for a pregnancy OB clinic. In the past, the pregnancy women who have no insurance was taken care of through a grant through the hospital, and the hospital will no longer have that grant after March 1st. So there will be a huge void for women needing pregnancy care who have no insurance. So working with the hospital, we are willing and able at this point to help fill that void. So we have a pregnancy clinic that will start March 11th. And working with the hospital, we've asked for reduced fees that the patients will pay for their labs when they're here to see us. So this is the lab agreement, the lab order form, and this is what we're asking to charge our patients that come in for a pregnancy clinic, and they would be responsible for paying these. If they're not able to pay, then we would work with them, sort of like a sliding scale, or like we have with our vaccination clinic, a standard fee that they could pay. We're also asking to pay for these services, and then we would like to ask for an additional $30 each time they get labs to cover supplies, testing. We do some point-of-care testing, and as well as sharps removal and bloodborne pathogens. So each person that would come in, we would ask $30 standard flat fee, and then depending on which labs they would get, they would be responsible for the pricing before you.
All right, thank you. So regarding this pricing, what do they pay today? Do they pay anything?
Currently, currently, there are no charges because we just got started. We're also asking the hospital to allow these charges to be the same charges for the Rooted Clinic, people who are not pregnant, but I haven't heard back yet from administration if they'll allow us to use the same pricing. So moving forward, if you approve after this meeting, we would, anyone coming into the Rooted Clinic or the Pregnancy Clinic, we would ask these charges if they receive labs.
Any questions, Ron? All right, good. If there's some questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Arnold. I was second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
Thank you.
Thanks Kathy. All right, next up, I've got the airport, Erica. Good morning.
The airport has in their position a 1975 international dump truck, four-by-four. It's in immaculate condition because it's been in our maintenance shop for the past 12 years at least. I'd like to dispose of it through an auction, the auction south of town off of 257. We just don't need it. I don't, it's not feasible for us. We don't need a dump truck. Comes with a snowplow and everything else, and we'd like to take that money and utilize it elsewhere by other equipment. And it doesn't have a title. I've checked with Jen. I don't have a title. She doesn't have a title. I have no idea how we got this dump truck, to be honest. I can't find any record.
Is it still, I mean, when you say immaculate, are you being?
It's, no, like, I mean, it runs, drives, dumps, whole nine yards.
Weren't they?
Have you checked the Highway Department? Checked the Highway Department?
Okay, if they want to buy it, or?
Oh yeah, yeah, right.
Okay.
Yeah. I apologize. I thought this was like an abandoned dump truck that we just need to haul off and salvage. I didn't realize this was.
In good shape. They're short trucks anyway.
Yeah, it's in, it's in good shape. The board, the BOAC, voted to send it to the Graeber Auction with a $5,000 reserve on it.
Oh, okay. I missed that in the email. Yeah, definitely reach out to the Highway Department.
Okay.
Usually by the time we get these, they've got three wheels. Everything else is falling off.
I thought it was under that. Okay, yeah, my apologies.
That's all right.
Yeah, let's pause on the auction and reach out to Chris. Reach out to Chris.
Okay.
And then, and then keep me in the loop.
Okay, how, like, let them offer a price?
Well, have them come look at it.
Okay.
Get on Kelly's Blue Book.
Okay.
They'll be able to get a value of it.
Okay.
And then, if they can use it, then we'll keep it internal.
Okay.
And if they can't, then we'll have to go to the surplus property process since it's over $1,000.
Okay.
So, yeah, so definitely reach out to Chris. Have him and his guys come out, look at it.
Okay, sounds good.
Awesome. Thanks, Erica.
Thanks, guys.
You're good for that. I'm sorry.
No, that's perfect.
Okay.
All right, yeah, thank you. Next up, we've got the insurance. We met with Paul Williams, the property and casualty. He's here too. Yeah, his cohort is here, just for some, just for some eye candy. I don't know what Paul was, what he meant by that, but, so, I know, I met with Paul, went through all the details of the workers' comp and the property and casualty. Ron, I think you may have had a discussion with him too.
Yeah, I've met with him.
So this does renew, this does renew March 1st, so it's a decision that we need to do today. So first, first thing we need to do is a motion to accept the Bliss McKnight package quote. I think we have this in here. The Bliss McKnight package quote is, I think, in total $228,000. The other quote was $291,000. So the recommendation was to go with the Bliss McKnight quote. Ron, did you have any questions or?
The only question that really came up was Bliss being non-rated, which I really don't think factors into anything. At the end of the day, there's a fund that if they would go belly up, that there's a fund that covers that, but we're not at any risk by them not being rated. So, no, I have no problem.
New Voice County has the same carrier, and we contacted them, and they've had no problems with claims or anything from the company or anything like that, so.
All right, great. Now with that in mind, I'd entertain a motion to accept the Bliss McKnight package quote.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Arnold. I was second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes two zero. And next up, we got the general liability and pollution for the solid waste district.
That used to be part of our package, is the way I understand it, but it had to be broken out because the company would not take it because of liability with landfill. And the landfill always paid their share, the way I understand it.
Okay, yeah. Just trying to see where that's at, and. Trying to see where that's at in here. Alan, look, I'm just, what we're looking at?
Oh, it's on the subscribers agreement.
I'm sorry? This one?
Subscribers agreement's a different document. It's just a separate document. It should be $8,000 maybe.
The Bliss McKnight does not include the solid waste district, so therefore, we had to create a policy for the solid waste district as well. I remember seeing those numbers when I met with Paul. I'm struggling to find.
Oh, there's a line on this page that talks about it.
Okay, here it is, at the very bottom. Okay, it's $15,000 premium. So what we discussed about is now that it's not included in this policy, this probably, maybe just need to go to solid waste, and that board needs to approve it. So I guess we can approve it on their behalf, but this needs to be a policy that goes directly to solid waste, and solid waste pays it?
The preference.
Because it's no longer included in our general liability. So let's go ahead and make, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 15. They can bring it up at the next solid waste board meeting for further discussion.
Let me put a good line, yeah, so moved.
Because this will need to be in place by March 1st. So as far as the billing, we'll handle that internally. A motion made by Commissioner Arnold. I was second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. So ladies, I will need you to email Gina and just let her know that we approved this because it's effective March 1st. But instead of us paying it and then reimbursing us, we just need to have them be the owners. Okay, there's two. And then, need a motion to accept the Chubb property and inland marine coverage.
It's on maybe five pages back, it looks like.
Okay, so it looks like the premiums, the total, the coverage limit increased from 45 million to 66 million, and then the premium increased from 53,000 to 80,000. So, and again, we'll need to look at the budget, because we budgeted all this last June. So we're going to have to look at the budget to support the additional appropriation. We're always kind of in hindsight on this stuff. And just real quick, as an aside, on the, on the health insurance, we change, we just kind of decide on health insurance earlier in the year before budget. Property and casualty and workers' comp, it renews March 1st. So we're always just kind of guessing on that number, so. Because we're going to be asking the council for more money, so we'll make sure you knew that before we came to him. Ron, any questions on the property and inland marine coverage?
No, then, like most things, it's gone up, but I think Paul's done a very good job getting the best policy he could for us. I've had several conversations with him, and this go-around wasn't quite as easy as some of them have been.
Yeah. Yeah, the limit definitely increased, you know, almost 50% as far as what we're covering, so. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the $80,316 premium for the property and inland marine coverage.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Arnold. I was second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes two zero. Alan, see, it was easy. When Paul's here, he talks all the time. He goes on and on. He come in, he gets stuff done.
That's the difference between president and vice president.
Did you make a motion to approve the subscribers agreement as well, which we talked about via email, but make a motion to approve that particular subscribers agreement?
And is this the broker of record thing that we signed already?
The thing that talks about. Email about this.
Oh, okay.
Policy shall be issued without continued liability.
Okay, this, here's an addendum to the contracts we just approved. This is subscribers agreement that just further details what's covered and not covered, and what our liabilities and what our responsibilities are. I'd entertain a motion to sign the subscribers agreement?
That's the one that is titled governmental inter-insurance exchange.
Yes. A motion made by Commissioner Arnold. I was second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes two zero. All right, here, here's a clean one.
Just make sure that. Copies. Don't want to scan everything in, just got it. If you need, take one.
We can call him. We can get him on his phone. I want him on his, conferencing man. Yeah, no, he's not even on the fishing trip.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thanks for coming in. All right, thanks, Alan. All right, next up, we've got Bob Gurley, Economic Development Corporation, regarding the GIS licensing.
Hi, everyone. It's a bit of a housekeeping item. I learned that Duke Energy awarded us a small amount of money to improve our GIS capabilities, track down Bryant, talked with Jan at the auditor's office about what could we do in this regard, and apparently we can purchase a license to WTH, and with an arrangement with the county GIS system, be able to use enhanced geographic information layers that are not available on the public viewer. That would be helpful for us to understand floodplains, land contours, et cetera, and just be able to generate better, better mapping for, for all sorts of projects. So we have a bit of money to cover the expense of a license, and I'll maybe refer to Jan about the arrangement by which we would be able to access those layers.
We have contacted GIS, and they have stated that they have agreements that they can help us work with. It's already part of our fees that we have with them to work up an agreement to bring before you guys to officially sign, but we just needed a clear definition on how you would want to proceed forward, and who would want to kind of be that contact person with us with GIS to make sure we get this taken care of.
Any questions, Ron?
We've, we've done this before for people that request access to it, so I have no problem.
Okay, yeah, I don't have any problem at all. So I entertain a motion to grant the access for economic development to the GIS license, and they'll work out the details later.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Arnold. I was second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes two zero. Thanks, Bob. Next up, we've got the TIF management agreement from Baker Tilly. These are standard agreements each year we sign. I complain each year about the price ranges and.
Can I stop you just real quick? We need to go backwards once. There is a note, or a letter from WTH. This is where we get paid by sharing our data.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is a different situation.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah. So that's the WTH, here it is, Electronic Map Application Agreement. So WTH will send the GIS data to the client, and a check of $250 will be sent to the county.
Yeah, this is what we've done in the past. This is what we've done to help share data for specific projects or something that someone's got going on. What Bob is doing is a little different. That's an actual agreement with the county that we have to get in, put in place.
Okay, so this allows WTH to share it and then?
Yes, on the layer of information that's already there.
Then we're compensated. Okay, any questions, Ron?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Arnold. I was second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes two zero. All right, thanks, Jen. I would have cross-spoke those out. All right, next up, we've got the TIF management agreement. We've used Baker Tilly in the past, and this is their updated fee schedule for the TIF management. In this particular industry, it just, they have different ranges of hourly rates based off the type of personnel. The ranges are quite wide, but it is what it is, they say. So it looks like their rates are increasing. The partners are now $400 to $600 an hour. Apparently, we know when we get the invoice, which rate it is, or do we know ahead of time? And I, and I like working with Baker Tilly. They do good work.
I think it's kind of a broad piece, based off of county to county, and how many TIFs they have, and how much time it takes for them to have to work this in.
When we engage them, when do we know what it costs?
It's after the services have been rendered, but based off of the hours that it takes, is my understanding.
Okay, that's my understanding too, and I, again, I do like working with them. It's just painful. Any questions?
It's a kind of a fee for service, and it's based on the hourly rate. They provide a lot of services that we sometimes don't necessarily need. So I would just say, only use what we have to have from them.
And they do quote us now. I mean, when we ask them to do something, they do send us a quote, so we know ahead of time.
They keep us in compliance with what is required, but that's what we need to do and no more unless we request it.
Yeah, we do a lot more Zoom calls with them instead of the?
And I think they do provide some service to you free of charge, don't they?
Yeah.
I mean, it's good to have them in the, in the hopper, that Bob can call and ask a question or two and get answers, so I have no problem with it.
Okay, they've been a good partner, so I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Arnold. I was second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes two zero. Next up, the Longevity Pay Plan Committee with a change in the prosecutor. Dan Murray's obviously now a judge, and now Abby Brown is the prosecutor, and so therefore, she is pending our approval. She'll be replacing Dan on the pay, longevity pay.
Has she been informed she's replacing Dan?
She's watching. I'm kidding. Dan, Dan reached out a month or so ago.
They want to appoint somebody, surprise.
That's a good point. According to Dan, he's cordoned, he's communicated with her, so. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Arnold. I was second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion passes two zero. All right, next up, we've got the credit card resolution. Seen quite a few emails come back and forth on, on this one. Grant, any, Jen, anything we need to?
I would just like your, your discretion on how you would like for us to handle it. I know that we need to update it for the request from State Board of Accounts, just to get some clarification beyond that, just how, specifically how to handle with West Boggs. Their claiming process is a little different when it comes into the office, but whenever it falls back on the county's policy, we are strictly to a one major credit card for the county, and I don't know how in-depth you want to micromanage that, per se, and how we want to keep it in there, or if we can, how, I don't know how you want to handle it, or want us to.
So this, this comes, we've had a credit card resolution for some time. It's similar, but with some revisions for the State Board of Accounts. And then, the question I, I think that she's asking is how do we handle West Boggs, because it's kind of an exception to what we're doing. Now granted, this is a, it's a two-part, it's a, excuse me, it's a two-county park board, so it's, it's not merely us. I think it can be an exception, and my thought was, we've got something that is acceptable to Jen, that's acceptable to the State Board of Accounts, and we give them the draft of that and say, hey, can you get your resolution in compliance with this? Obviously, we don't make decisions for the park board, but we can pass something that's going to be generally acceptable in the draft and say, hey, this is what we understand you need to do.
No, I think so. I mean, if it's a county department, obviously, they abide by our policy, by our bank, by our whatever, but this isn't really a county department, so I think whatever bank, whatever cards they use is their prerogative.
We just need to state it in there, so whether or not we can just change a line that, and Grant, you'll have to help me on how that, to word that, as in, they can have their, their own one major credit card that's billable, and that they can turn into the county.
Yeah, and I think what, I mean, yeah, so, I mean, I think that's fine, and I do, and I guess in an ideal world, we give them our policy, because chances are, they probably don't have a policy, because, you know.
I think that's what's happened, and now it's calling back on ours.
Have them show our policy, and then, you know, have that board look at our policy and just say, look, if you can abide by this, this is great, or show us your policy, because it's probably a little looser than ours. Whatever bank they want to use is fine, or a credit card, as long as they know what they're actually getting. And if it's a credit card, I'm thinking more, not even a bank associated with it, so.
But, but really, two things. So we're, we're doing something to make revisions per the State Board of Accounts for this county, but also, assuming this gets passed, we should probably give them the example and say, hey, we'd like you to come into compliance with this for additional guidance, a second step, right?
Yeah, I like, I like that. So what, perhaps we do this, Ron, we approve this policy, send it to Boggs and say, hey, here's our policy. They can make some revisions to it, and then submit, send those revisions back to us for us to review, but let's have them create the revisions.
So per that, it says that the county is to only have one major policy, or one major credit card. So with that, then that puts them in that, in our big group.
Yeah. So let's start there.
Okay.
And then if they say that's problematic, then have them help us revise this agreement, and then we can exempt them out. But until we know it's a problem, there's no reason to exempt them. to exempt them.
I mean, it's one or the other. Either we're gonna exempt them out, or they're gonna fall under our policy. I'd want to make sure if they do their own thing, that come back and the county's not liable for their actions.
Right. So, if they are gonna fall under our policy, um, I think I did send an email of how many and who all, and their limits. I need verification on how to set that up.
Is it correct to say that if they do not have a policy, they fall under ours, correct? So, we say this is our policy, and if you all, they're a separate, it's a separate body and board. If, if you want to do something different than that, you know?
Right. And then, we'll just make, we'll just make that revision in here, that West Boggs falls under policy number XYZ, which is their own internal policy.
Okay.
Okay, so let's start with this. Have them send us their policy. If we see their policy sufficient, then just make notation of that in here, and then we'll add this to the next commissioner's meeting.
Sounds good.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Okay, court, a credit card. Okay, that was a credit card. Courthouse renovation, um, okay, just a couple of quick updates there. Uh, we, it looks like we got a couple of things here we need to sign. So, they've come in to, um, the hazardous, the asbestos company, hazardous material removal folks came in to evaluate some of the fluorine and so forth. So, uh, we did make a decision to go ahead and leave some of the tile in place and just simply tile over it. That way, it's non-friable, I think's the, how you say it. Um, and then it's acceptable long-term. But with what they have found and, um, everything, the, we've got a scope of work here in the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. I don't have the exact budgeted amount in front of me, um, but I was, I was not notified that this was outside of budget. So, um, seems like we had seventy-five thousand dollars, but I've just, I've looked at too many numbers. So, so before us from Elite Environmental, we do have, um, a contract here in the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred ninety dollars that needs to be approved. I went ahead and did sign it, so the work wasn't delayed, um, but we just need to officially approve it today. Any questions or discussions?
No, all these are basically vetted by Garmont. They're on board with us.
Yeah, everything comes up through Garmont, and then Garmont sends it to the county and advises us on what to do. If there's a decision we need to make, if it's real time, I make the decision and then just loop in as many people as I, I can.
Okay.
Um, so, is a motion, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Arnold. I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion passes two zero. The security automation system, SAS, is, that's the current system we have in the jail, uh, that we wanted to keep consistency there. Eric, or Gary and his team's been spearheading this with SAS. Um, it's in the amount of two hundred sixty-six thousand dollars, which, which I believe is pretty much on the number, on the budgeted amount, if I remember correctly. Um, we did evaluate, like, the camera types and so forth, if we can use a different type of camera to get some of the cost down. I think at the end of the day, they suggested we, we leave the equipment type as is, so, um, and then, and Dale's being kind of remotely involved with this as well, so. There's no other questions on the SAS system. I would entertain a motion to approve the two hundred sixty-six thousand dollar agreement.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Arnold. I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion passes two zero. Um, so far, is it, here's the courthouse renovations going as, as planned, getting two weeks, two weeks into it. So, um, I've reached out to the department heads last week. Uh, I was in the jail, uh, Monday, um, visiting. Um, and, um, obviously, some cramped quarters and, um, but limited options. So, we are, um, going to look at some options downstairs and, and further soundproofing. I think it's going through the ceiling, because the, the walls down there are six inches of insulation, but, um, we have some noise issues in the basement, so we're gonna look at some, uh, very low-cost options there. Um, the Health Department, and to the extension, graciously, uh, offered up, um, a meeting room that they have in case there, the judge and the probation have overlap. Um, so, so far, everyone's surviving, so it'll get better. We'll get used to it, so. Any other questions? Any updates, or any?
No, I did see the memo on the, the benches for the courtroom, that those aren't gonna be able to be reused, because they have to be cut up to get out, so.
Yeah, some of those pews-
We'll be purchasing a few more chairs.
Yeah, we made a game time decision to, to remove the chairs. The chairs, we needed ninety chairs times a hundred and thirty dollars each, so I don't know, it's fifteen, twenty thousand, whatever that was. We decided to remove the chairs and use the existing pews, but then, when they went to disassemble them, I guess the pews were built into the walls, so when they started to break them off, um, they, they were twenty-some feet long, and then they couldn't get them physically out, so they were gonna have to cut them and then redo it. So, they thought by the time they did all that, they were gonna have more in labor. So, we went back to the chairs, um, instead. Um, the railing, we made a decision on the railing to just keep the existing railing. The cost of it tripled, so it's for the new railings, so, that hand railing going up the stairs. Everything outside, we're gonna keep as is, so they, um, we'll have to make a decision on the bell. When they bring the bell down, you know, we may have to just do a temporary concrete pad or something to put it on, but we're not there yet. But, um, I mean, so far, I think, I think we're doing, we're getting used to that, used to the different technology they use, the Procore and different things, and, yeah, that's app that they communicate, everyone communicates on this one system, but.
I've been really impressed. I mean, when I go past the courthouse early, there's a lot of people there, I mean, working, which is impressive. Even this morning, maybe seven o'clock. I mean, there, there's a lot of activity over there.
Yeah. Yeah, there is. They're, they're moving right along, um, they're moving right along, and, and I, I know they were able to salvage a lot of the molding and door frames and st, stuff with some local vendors during that bid process. You know, that worked out fairly well. We didn't have to throw all that stuff away, so. So, we keep chugging along, so. Um, anything else? Are we good of the order? Yep? We good? Good. Um, okay, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to approve payroll claims and to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Arnold. I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion passes two zero. Have a good week, everyone.
Made you nine o'clock deadline.
Did we meet it?
Yep.